Call to order, the City of Dickinson Commission meeting Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. Let the record show we are missing one Commissioner, Commissioner Steiner. Move on to the order of business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the order of business?
Thank you, President Decker. There are two additions to the agenda this evening. Under number three administration, we will add an item D for city administrator resignation. And then also under engineering, we will slide reports down to C and in there add an item for B for discussion of the 2020 mill and overlay special assessments. And then also as a reminder, both to the commission and the public, at 5:00 we will have a public hearing on urban forestry and then move right into public comments, not on the agenda. So if you wish to call in for either one of those, that number is 456-7006.
Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on the amended order of business? No questions or comments on the amended order of business, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the amended order of business?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the amended order of business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Commissioners, on the consent agenda, are there any items you wish to discuss? No one has any comments or questions on the consent agenda? I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on the consent agenda. We'll move right into administration. First item up, Mr. Gah, you have a liquor license transfer.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This is a transfer of a license. There's a liquor store located at 373 15th Street West, which is actually behind Astoria. There's been a change of ownership there and they plan to transfer that location to a new liquor store being built by a convenience store at 10th Avenue East and Villard at the corner of the East Business Loop there. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Gah on the liquor license transfer for Legacy 7 Liquor? Not a look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the liquor license transfer.
We have a motion to approve liquor license transfer by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or questions on this liquor license transfer? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Gah, you have a liquor license amendment for Blue 42.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This is, most of you are probably familiar with Blue 42. This is really just a service area update. Their liquor license area that's been approved is the first level. There is a finished out area on the second level they've never utilized. They'd like to start utilizing it for special events or perhaps overflow service. Will not be a bar up there, the bar will stay downstairs. This will just simply be a service order, the alcohol will be taken up there. Has been reviewed by staff and recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on this application by Blue 42?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the amendment to the liquor license for Blue 42.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any questions or comments on this liquor license amendment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Gah?
The next item is for, to discuss setting the next Board of Equalization date. As you recall, the initial meeting was set and opened up. And at that point in time, as a commission, you approved to maintain values at 2019. So adjustments were made, notifications were sent out, and property owners were given the opportunity, mainly those that their values had increased for some reason or another, new construction or some renovations. And those folks were given the opportunity to appeal. That deadline was April 29th, so those are in. I don't have an exact number, but the list is much shorter than what you saw at the first meeting. Staff will review those next week, see if there's some changes. Of course, what usually happens is there's some sort of negotiation, maybe there was something that was missed. Staff can come up with a, and the citizens can come up with a medium that they agree on. Most of these, that's probably not going to be the case, so they will come to you. We're going to simplify the form a little bit, where you will see kind of a cover form with a recommendation. We will give the property owner an opportunity to have kind of their letter with it, to kind of minimize the material you have to review ahead of time. We think this is going to be relatively short, so it could be added to the end of the May 19th mission meeting. And then that allows our assessing staff, the county staff, an opportunity to get it on in the timeline accordingly. So it would be our recommendation to add that to the agenda, just consensus to add that to the agenda. And then it will come out with your packet, so you'll have a few extra days to view it.
Any questions or concerns on adding this to the 19th?
My only concern would be just by the number. I mean, I know you said we have less, but I don't really know what that means. So are we thinking more than 10, less than 10?
I would say 10 to 12. Linda, do you have a thought? Ms. Carlson?
I reviewed the list this morning, and it's going to be less than 10.
Okay.
It's definitely going to be less than 10.
Thank you.
I think that would, we can accommodate that.
And we believe what we'll try and do with kind of the simplified process is we can probably also timetable them out a little bit to keep them on target.
We had meetings that went until 9:00. We can get back to that, right Rita? All right. Any other questions for Mr. Gah on the BOE, Board of Equalization? Questions for staff? I think we can move that to then, to the 19th and accommodate that.
Very good, thank you.
So I don't think we need a motion on that, that'll just be added.
Correct.
Okay, and then your other item, Mr. Gah.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. As some of you know, I came from the lower Midwest about a year and a half ago. And while I greatly enjoy Dickinson, I enjoy the community quite a little bit, probably have the best work-life balance I've ever had because it's a big enough community, there's places to eat and events to go to. I don't think I missed a first-on-first last year, I really enjoyed those. But the call to get closer to home has grown stronger, and I was offered an opportunity to become the next city manager in Aberdeen, South Dakota, where that manager's retiring. I think by census numbers, it's about 3,000 people bigger than Dickinson, so very close to the same size, which I have loved the size of town. Lot of stuff going on, I think I'll be able to make a nice transition. But I just want everybody to know that I've enjoyed my time here. Some of the staff in City Hall are not happy that I'm leaving, but they're starting to speak to me again. But I sent you the letter, has a proposed date of June 12th. Met with Ms. Carlson today and President Decker. If we can get some of the priorities done, perhaps that day could move up a little bit. I was going to throw some vacation days in there as well. So with the permission tonight to accept my resignation, but perhaps allow an earlier date if negotiated with President Decker and myself.
Any questions? I think Mr. Gah and I went over everything that is happening. I know he's met with Linda. I expressed some of my concerns on some certain items that we need to work through and expedite a little bit better this time than the last transition, city administrator wise. We think we can accomplish that. And both had some concerns, but I think we can work something out. And I'd like to possibly afford him some time for his transition because to jump in there, I know they, he put a date down, but they're also leaving, you know, they're losing their city manager, so there has to be some transition concerns there that he's aware of. So when we talked, talked about possibly moving up the deadline to the end of the month because of some of the pay period issues. And if we can get everything done, I think we can come to some kind of agreement to possibly the 29th or around there. So, and then I think Mr. Gah, you know, he put a lot of time and effort into his house in town here and put it on the market already, and I don't think he's going to have a house to live in very quickly. So, but appreciate, you know, all the hard work you've put in. I know the transition up here coming from Missouri, Iowa, has sometimes brought its challenges and the different items that we have to deal with in southwest North Dakota, not only as a regular city item, but also dealing with the oil field is also interesting. And I appreciate all the time and effort that you've put in into our community. I know that just working with you daily here for the past, you know, almost two months with COVID going on and everything, and I know the, where the heartstrings get tugged. So, but I do appreciate all the hard work that you have provided for us at the City of Dickinson. So, anyone else have any words?
I would pretty much echo mostly what you said. It's been nice getting to know you and wish you the best and wish we could keep you around a little longer, but it's hard to, when you have family and friends that are closer, you know, you move into an area that you really don't know anybody, and then it's tough to get back and forth from Little Dickinson Airport sometimes to the Midwest. So, it'll be, Aberdeen's a nice little town. I used to live in Sioux Falls, I used to drive through there all the time.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. President, I would, I would tag on to that and, you know, I have the same thoughts. Thank you so much, Mr. Gah, for coming into Dickinson and accepting the challenge. But quite the roller coaster with COVID and the downturn and, you know, definitely have some, some big shoes to fill as we work ourselves into the next budget session. And congratulations on your, on your new adventure.
Thanks to everybody.
So I guess we need a motion to accept this resignation.
I would move to approve the resignation from Mr. Gah.
So we have a motion to approve the resignation letter with negotiations, it possibly may end earlier, if we can work everything out, get through some of these projects.
Just work out the details, that's fine. I'd second that motion then.
So, we have a motion to approve with a second. No further comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the motion to accept Mr. Gah's resignation, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
In terms of our next steps forward, are we going to be having a special meeting to talk about interim city administrator roles or what our next steps are?
I think we'll sit down, Joe and Linda and myself, and we'll talk a little bit more this week. I anticipate probably a special meeting to how we're going to move forward.
Are you going to have another Commissioner?
We can.
I think two would be good.
I can have the Vice President there because we know he's going to be here for sure after the election, so.
I think that's a good idea.
That way we can transition into June and keep going, so. So we'll set something up.
Thank you.
That is it for administration. We'll move into engineering. And Mr. Kubis, you have KLJ standard agreement?
President Decker, I do. Can I ask, is the audio good on your end?
It's good, yes it is.
Okay. So on item A with KLJ, I also call that there should have been a different attachment in there. What's in front of you in your packet was approved recently, so again, it's all there to ruin, there's no action that needs to be taken on that contract. We will order that, we will send an improvement company, KLJ, with a consultant working on the project, so really no action needed on item A tonight.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kubis on this item A, the KLJ standard agreement? Okay, if there is, if we've already taken care of this, then we just need to move forward into your item B, the amended item B?
Correct. If I could, there will be a forthcoming item on, if we have read amended for construction engineering services for that 2020 Illinois project, but we'll have them ready for the next meeting. So, moving on to item B, was the discussion on the special assessments for sidewalks on the Philly County Illinois project. As you recall, this project went through a special assessment, district creation protest period, and that protest period did not protest the project out several months ago. One particular property owner came in to discuss his special assessment on the project. And this is really what I consider a final meeting to wrap up those comments from the five of you commissioners, to give definitive direction on how sidewalk will be installed. And this is particular to those B, although it would apply to the residential neighborhoods that are milling and overlaying as well. So, in summary, generally we have properties up there that have developed or not developed, and some of them have sidewalk and some do not have sidewalk. The intensive policy that was created in January by resolution stated that through this mill and overlaying project, that properties that do not have sidewalk would have sidewalk installed on them. And that front of you, the repairer would have the sidewalk repaired, and those, most costs of the sidewalk and also curving gutter would be assessed back through the basic property order.
While you're working on that, Mr. Kubis, when did, to refresh our memory, when was the initial appearance by Mr. Wilhelmie? We could probably.
I believe it was in February. And I might add, I believe Mr. Wilhelm is watching the meeting live, and would probably like to comment during the public comment time, but obviously that'll be a little bit after this discussion, so. The drawing I'm pulling up here is generally the neighborhood that the property in question I don't know if that appeared on your end?
There it is, yeah, yeah, we got it.
So the property in question involves the six, seven or eight buildings with white roofs on them. Right now, currently, there's no sidewalk in front of them, that property. Small on my end, I don't know if you can see, but there's also property to the north and property to the east that also do not have sidewalk, that are all proposed to have sidewalk added to them with this project. And if you haven't just recently received an email from me, I would also point out that while Mr. Wilhelm did have, I believe, we awarded a estimate in the zone, when put on a per foot basis, Mr. Wilhelm's assessment was $68.10 per linial foot. I think it's worth mentioning that it's a random sampling of other properties that are adding sidewalk and/or curving gutter. They can all be $14 per linial foot, $71 per linial foot, $62 per linial foot, and $51 per linial foot. So, while the sheer dollar amount is enlarged from Mr. Wilhelm, it certainly is not, I believe, the highest assessment that was put in that, in that neighborhood. I guess at this point, I would certainly open it up to any questions, if we want to go back and discuss some of the points from the prior meeting, the February meeting where all of them discussed. I'd be happy to do that, but I do believe that this project is, is a good way to, I would say, take care of some of the inconsistencies of the past, where moving forward after this project, if it's built as designed, all the properties in this neighborhood will have sidewalk in front of their businesses or in front of their lots.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kubis? I know that I have toured this area multiple times, and to me, it provides a very unique challenge, just the way it's laid out. So do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Kubis? I know the last time we had this, this discussion, Mr. Steiner was here, Mr. Frederick was not Do you have any questions for him, Mr. Frederick?
No, I've toured the, prior to, you know, even adopting the special assessment policy, I went with Craig and Loretta up to the area, and we looked at all the stuff up there. It's one of these situations where anytime anybody builds up in that area, we require them to put a sidewalk in now. So the, the properties that don't have sidewalk, if we miss this opportunity now, when do we ever get a chance to do it again? 10, 15 years down the road again? I, I understand the cost is, is high, but they've also, I mean, it's high for all the other businesses to require. It's in our, I think it's in our city ordinance that the sidewalks required in this, in this zoning. So at what point do we say you have to put it in, or do we just let it slide forever?
Any other comments, questions?
You drive up there right now, and you have a business that has sidewalk on 150 feet a lot, and then you don't have sidewalk on any lot around it, and we force them to put it in as part of their building code.
My only concern up there, and you know, the unique challenge there with offloading and loading his neighbors, and if we're requiring the sidewalk to be put in, even if it's a reinforced, a thicker sidewalk, he cannot keep them with their semis off that sidewalk when they're unloading those to the north, all those, those semis. So in five years, when that concrete's busted up, and we say, hey, you have to replace that concrete, then what? I mean, how, I mean, what enforcement mechanism do we have to have those semis stay off of his property?
But we have that issue now with the people that have sidewalk.
Yeah, but you generally don't have semis parking on, where they're parking right now, they'll be parking on a, a new sidewalk.
Well, there's properties up there that have sidewalk, that are unloading semis. You've got, you've got the steel shop that's a block north that has semis coming daily. And there's, that's the same street I believe is Sherwin-Williams is on and a couple other businesses, and they have sidewalk.
Well, the Sherwin-Williams is to the north.
Yeah, it's a block north. I'm just saying, every street on that, in that subdivision gets semi traffic. It's not just, it's not just unique to that street.
Mr. Kubis, to the west, I mean, excuse me, to the east of Mr. Wilhelmie's land, I noticed there's an open lot there. And that open lot is also going to be required to pour sidewalk?
It would, that's a, it's an undeveloped yard for burner electric, if I recall correctly.
Okay, I think you're correct. It is, I've seen burner electric equipment parked on that lot, so.
I would have, well, not by ordinance, but by our city construction standards, a neighborhood like this would certainly qualify maybe as a preferred or an eight-inch driveway, which I think would alleviate some of the concerns, alleviate concerns in my mind anyway, about any of those potentially cracking up new concrete. It's certainly not where we want to see this, you know, go in five years, where we have a lot of busted up concrete that we just poured. We, no one wants to see that, of course.
Mr. Kubis, is that monoball curb or is that high back curb?
This is all monoball curb right here.
So how are we going to keep them off the sidewalk then?
Well, that's the challenge. That would be the reason for going for a continuous eight-inch sidewalk. Typically, in a neighborhood like this, we would have six-inch sidewalk with eight-inch driveways, but by the nature of the layout of the buildings, it really doesn't lend itself to a singular controlled access point because there's, there's overhead doors that are facing the, facing 22nd Street. So understandably, that, those vehicles, whether they're semis or pickups or whatnot, they kind of leave and enter the street wherever it's convenient. But an eight-inch thick sidewalk would be, from my knowledge, as thick as any concrete street we would have in town too, so.
Is that how our thick streets are, eight-inch?
Mr. President?
Ms. Trustum?
Thanks, Commissioner Frederick. I think that is valuable information to provide that we didn't have at that last meeting, you know, especially since that is a current requirement under city ordinance. Mr. Kubis, located to the east of this property down 22nd Street East, is that consolidated? Do they have a property, backside of a property that faces 22nd and a garage with a loading area? Sorry.
On the far east end of 22nd, I believe, is it consolidated, don't we guess?
You know, I just pulled it up on, on Google to view the area again. I didn't drive that far down. But I see that they have sidewalk and then the paved driveway. It looks like a continuous driveway, but that does have sidewalk included, correct?
Yeah, it would be built into it, yeah.
Built in? I'm sorry, I'm not as rehearsed in sidewalks, but this is probably similar to what the storage business would have to install. Is that correct?
I don't have the footage of that, but essentially, all we'd be looking for in front of the storage building would just be a five-foot wide sidewalk where consolidated by the proximity of their building to the street, it's concrete from the, from the curve all the way to their, to their building. So it serves as a sidewalk and partially as their driveway to their building.
Right, and I think that was the concern that was. Right, and I think that was the concern that was brought forth by Mr. Wilhelm, was that there wasn't necessarily one access point to his facilities. There, people used multiple points with it not being paved, kind of that, they needed that capability to be flexible when moving large trucks or vehicles through his area. Is that correct?
I think that's, I think that's a fair statement, and with the majority of this curb being monoball curb, that applies to quite a few of the businesses here, that whether they need direct access or they don't, they kind of have free-flowing access into their property because they can jump the curb, so to speak, where they need to.
Right. So if this were a new business going into this part of town, there would be no, there would be no conversation on this. We would require sidewalk.
And we would require their lot to be paved.
Yeah, and the lot would have to be paved, too.
We wouldn't, we don't allow gravel lots on new commercial structures either.
Mr. Gao, I think we have timetable for five.
We do.
For a call-in for this.
Correct. Seven zero zero six. Did you hit nine?
No, I did not. I'm not in verse as this, as you guys have been for the last. I was just checking if you had called in, so. Okay, the five o'clock, we'll start the five o'clock timetable, and that is a public hearing on public comments on a urban forestry, consideration to approve a second reading and final passage of ordinance sixteen ninety-one. Is there anyone online? Well, I guess I'll have Mr. Zurov present the ordinance.
Thank you, President Decker and Commission. This is the second and final reading, I believe, of the change in the ordinance for the Urban Forestry Committee. What was added to this new ordinance is the makeup of the forestry committee. It says the committee shall consist of the following composition: one member who is employed by the North Dakota State University System, one member of the Park District, four members at large representing natural resources, utilities, educational, and general public, and one member of the city commission as liaison. And then it says upon initial appointment, two members shall be appointed for a term of one year, two members shall be appointed for a term of two years, and two members shall be appointed for a term of three years thereafter. All terms shall be for a period of three years. This just adds a consistent makeup of the committee that the forester is working on, and they do have a strong committee, and I think it will be good moving forward.
Any questions for Mrs. Zurov on this ordinance?
If one member, we switch our commission, our committee assignments every two years.
Right.
Where it says here, all terms will, after that period, will be three years. Does that include the?
I think for the, for the commission, we, generally, they're appointed from within the assignments after the election, so.
I'm just questioning that verbiage because we change our appointments every two years.
Commissioner Frederick, it certainly can be modified or updated depending on...
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be if everybody thinks it's fine. I'm just saying, it doesn't, it doesn't coincide with how we assign our committee assignment, so.
Can we sure change it, whatever works best?
I think that should be amended just for the commissioner, so.
Yeah, I, just to match whoever that is, because that does change every two years.
And it can, it can change every two years, so.
Other than that?
I'm going to attempt to call in now and see if there's anyone. Any other questions for Mrs. Zurov on the ordinance before I open up the public hearing?
Nope, no questions.
Seven zero zero six.
There is currently one person in the conference.
Okay, currently, we're opening the public hearing for the City of Dickinson Urban Forestry Committee. Is there anyone online that has any comments about the ordinance sixteen ninety-one and the appointment of members to the urban forestry? Is it a committee or commission?
Committee.
Committee, committee. Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any comments from the public on urban forestry ordinance sixteen ninety-one? Anyone from the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on the urban forestry ordinance number sixteen ninety-one, and I would look, if there are no more comments by commissioners, I would look for a motion on the sixteen ninety-one with the amendment to amend the two-year term for city commissioners.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion for final reading of, what was it, sixteen forty-one?
Sixteen ninety-one.
Sixteen ninety-one, ordinance sixteen ninety-one, second and final reading.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the second and final reading of sixteen ninety-one by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further comments or questions on sixteen ninety-one? Now, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on sixteen ninety-one. We'll go back to Mr. Kubis and his recommendations on our mill and overlay and the discussion. We're going to have, open up, see if anybody's online to converse on the mill and overlay. Mr. Wilhelm, are you online?
I'm on the phone now, yes. Wilhelm.
Wilhelm, Mr. Wilhelm.
I'm on the end.
Yeah, Mr. Wilhelm. I'm going to turn on the mic, so. Go ahead. Do you have any comments, Mr. Wilhelm?
Well, not, none that I haven't previously made. I guess, I just think having something for as long as that's been in place, we're not the first owner, but we're like the third owner. The two farthest buildings on the east side, we built probably, oh, about ten years ago, and we weren't, we weren't required to do anything at that point in time. I just think it's, I think it's a little, I just think it's a little late in the game to start throwing things out where all of a sudden, we're required to do something that wasn't initially required when the property was built.
Well, we are changing things, Mr. Wilhelm. Across the city, there is a lot of empty lots sitting there. At that time, the sidewalks were not required residential lots, and we are requiring them now to build sidewalks for connectivity.
Residential, I can well understand, but there, there's just, there's, you know, like I said, Sims, Sims Street, where you go from maybe Sachs Motor up to Walmart, that I could understand. Along Twenty-second Street, with the amount of commercial traffic, and it's not only the semis that are unloading, it's the weight of the forklift that they use to unload the semis with.
Well, regardless of our decision, there's going to have to be some changes on the offload, load and offload on that street.
Mr. Wilhelm, who's unloading there?
Most of the businesses to the north unload and park over there. Unloading on the north side of the street due to the fact that all of their driveways go uphill, and there is a, there's very large convex hump to that street. If you've driven on it, there's, I mean, the street has got a very large hump in the middle of it. It's not a flat street like downtown or like Highway twenty-two or some of the other streets. And when they come down their driveways, if, even if, even if the semi parks in the middle of the street, when you come up with a forklift, you cannot angle right to load and unload the iron pipe that they bring off. So what they end up doing is they have the semi park partways on mine, and then they go around onto the gravel with the forklift, and they unload. And I don't really have a problem with that, doesn't cause any grief, but I, you know, I, I don't want to end up putting in concrete and then, you know, it starts cracking up. We all know that concrete cracks in this climate, and the more weight you put on it, just like if you drive around where garbage trucks end up stopping and dumping garbage. You know, that much weight in that small of an area tends to put undue pressure on concrete. It's not as bad in the middle of the winter, not as bad in the middle of the summer, but during your, your freezing and your thawing periods, that's when you end up with problems. And I do need that continuous roll curb all the way around because there are various people that park there from the other businesses, and if you put driveways in, you limit my customers' access and ways to get around there. Because you can drive around any parking lot in the city, and you will see people hanging out with the end of their vehicles, hanging out into alleyways, driveways, and I really don't want to be calling the cops up there all the time. They have better things to do than to come up there and issue tickets and all, that's all it'll be, is it'll be a ticket issued, nobody will be towed because it's a public street, so I can't have any, anybody towed right away. So if you put high-back curb in there, that will be a major problem.
Well, I don't think we've ever discussed putting high-back curb in there. We're keeping it rolled. I guess what we're looking at is, is having the continuity within the city that our standard is our standard. And I understand it wasn't required ten years ago when you bought the property, but we are trying to make, you know, changes that it is a standard within the city. My, my question for Mrs. Carlson on these special assessments, on a large project, say, like Mr. Wilhelm's, that is a lot of money, do we have the ability as a commission to possibly, because most of this special assessment's going to be for a ten-year period, am I correct?
Correct, that's what Engineer Kubis has set it up for, is about ten years.
On these large projects where people are like thirty and forty and fifty thousand dollars, can we, as a commission, authorize a longer amount of payment?
I'd have to go to Christina and, or either that to the codes and look.
For, for those large projects like that, because I think we have a few in this. Mr. Kubis, am I correct, that are over thirty thousand?
The list I'm looking at, yeah, there's at least, at least two, probably more. I don't have them all on my disposal right now, but there's certainly two over thirty thousand dollars.
President Decker, I might just chime in here. We are, this is public comments not on the agenda, and we're starting to talk about an item that's on an agenda, so perhaps finish up the public comments and then return back to that, that's where you left off.
Okay, Mr. Wilhelm, do you have any other comments before?
Not for now, no.
Okay, now we'll end the public comments at this point. Thank you.
I might want to check and see if anybody else is on.
Is anyone else on? I didn't hear anybody else. Anyone else on that has any public comments? Close public comments. So, so back to that, that question, since we're back on, on this with Mr. Kubis and Mrs. Winko and Ms. Carlson, is that an option that we could extend it out longer so they're not as economically impacted on these very large projects?
President Decker, Commissioners, I'm not aware of anything in statute and century code that would prohibit that as an option. I think the only concern that we would have is fair application across the board for those that might fall into that category, but it's definitely something that could be explored. I could do a little bit of research on it just to confirm, but to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any restriction of that nature.
I'm just, I mean, you're looking at something that's thirty thousand dollars. That's a heavy impact regardless right now to any of these businesses.
Mr. President, I just wanted to state that, you know, we have other ones that are in special assessments, so if we do look at something that you want to extend on this one, I think I would be very specific onto this project because other than that, others that might have special assessments that are larger amounts could be coming forward.
Well, I guess we'd need that information before we move on that, but.
I think.
But, but Mr. Kubis is looking for direction to proceed this evening.
With this one.
Yes.
Mr. President, I appreciate Mr. Wilhelm's comments this evening. I know that this is certainly not the best situation for, for him and his business. I also think Mr. Kubis does a good job when he references that, you know, there is a formal protest period for North Dakota Century Code where fifty percent of property owners need to protest on the project and which will in turn stall the project from that area. And he does reference, and as you know, that only ten percent, less than ten percent of property owners in that area submitted protest. And although he makes a case that certainly we have looked at more deeply probably than others, we do have to be equitable for all property owners on this project. And I think with that, you know, I think we need to take that into consideration when making that decision.
President Decker?
Yes.
If, if I may, too, just on special improvement districts, you have to look, too, that the city is repaving, milling, and redoing the road. We are doing the ADA handicap corners, and in this project, we're just asking the property owners to assist the curb veteran sidewalk. In a lot of cities in North Dakota, you'll see that a lot of that is, the whole thing is special by the adjacent property owners. But I just, you know, the, the city is taking a big chunk out of this for the property owners and, you know, doing that improvement with, with minor assessments.
And, and I appreciate that information. Mrs. Zurov, to my point about extending it, say, from ten to fifteen years possibly, we could also look at, at the whole project, am I correct, for everybody, even the residential people, going from ten to fifteen. That would be equitable, though. If we do this, just on this project, we went from ten to fifteen.
Yes, President, that would, that would be equitable to that special sidewalk.
To this mill and overlay. And I think giving the additional five years and, this is an idea, too, and I, maybe this, having the first year, delaying the first year payment and starting it in, in twenty-twenty-two instead of twenty-twenty-one. Is that something commissioners would entertain?
Yeah, it would be open to that. Typically, how long after the project? I mean, I remember some past projects when we did the assessments, I mean, they didn't come on for months until the project was totally closed out, bills were paid, and by the time, it takes some time to even get them.
Yes, and I would have to refer to Mrs. Benstock because she's the one that handles the special assessments coming in from the county on, especially from back, or Mr. Kubis.
I think Craig had talked to Rita about this.
If I, with Mr. Frederick, President Decker, we had set a timeframe to complete the, well, called the assess work. called the assess work, the concrete work, of August 28th. Um, in, in conversation with Ms. Benstock, that would allow us the time to give those final assessed costs, not the total budget cost, but the cost that would be assessed through the county certified and on the tax rolls. Because if it not, if they would miss that deadline, I think they have an October deadline at the county level, those assessments would get pushed back a year regardless of our intention at the city. So, um, one other thing I would add to that idea of what I would call giving a, a year of grace to, to start retaining those special assessments is, we, we understand with the COVID situation, it, it's putting, put very, very many people in a different situation. The contractors that are working on this job being one of them. So, um, they're going to, to have to really push hard to meet that August 28 deadline. I guess all that being said, if, if that was an idea that was palatable to the commission to push off the, um, the assessments for a year, um, it might really help out the, the project itself being completed on time because when this was bid, obviously everyone respected to have, you know, their, their, their workforce in its entirety on the job, and that's not the case today. We hope that improves as the summer goes along, but, um, there might be some, some added benefit, not only to the property owners, but to the, the contractors doing the work as well.
Also, that would give time for the preppers to pay, the ones that want to pay off. It would give it time for Rita to collect that through that year and give a lot of time for those that want to pay off before it gets to the county level.
I'd be open to that.
I, I think, you know, that, that's something that we could, we could do. And then in, I mean, how do, how do you as Commissioners feel about the whole project going from the 10-year special to the 15? We collect our money regardless. And that would alleviate some of the impact too, even in, in year, you know, year number one, which will be 2021. Because let's be honest, we're all, we're getting a double whammy out here. We're getting COVID and we're getting oil.
I don't know that word, and maybe I'm wrong, but I would guess a majority of the property owners and business owners are gonna, are gonna pay it off.
Well, and they could.
To take the, to take the deduction. I mean, it'd be my guess, maybe not, you know, maybe some of these bigger ones.
Take damages or?
Well, I mean, it's an expense, it's an expense, so I mean, you can write it off on your tax return, but, I mean, to stretch it out 15 years, if it helps somebody, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. The, the whole issue with the whole situation is, is we've been inconsistent.
Right.
And this is what happens, we get ourselves in a predicament, and then at some point we have to like, put a hard, hard, our hard line down, and then it, it's unfavorable, but if we wouldn't have done some of the stuff we did before, we wouldn't be where here, where we are right now, so.
Yeah, and, and even to Mr. Wilhelm's point, 10 years ago when he added on to that infrastructure, 10 years ago, why wasn't that corrected?
We don't yet.
Again, don't know.
And maybe our, maybe our ordinance was a different back 10 years ago, but I don't know that I'm sure, well.
I don't know how long you've been on the?
I've been on planning and zoning not that long, but a long, pretty long time, but, and I've been building for 20 years. I, I just, most projects in every zoning code requires a sidewalk when you build something new, so we must have let it slide through the cracks somewhere, but.
I guess I, I'm, I'm willing to delay the payments for a year and extend the, the financing on the part of the special assessments to 15 years if the rest of the commission.
I'm, I don't have any issue with that.
Does that make a, take an amendment to the project?
Uh, Mr. President, Commissioners, if I recall correctly in looking at my past resolutions that were drafted, I do believe that there is language in the prior resolutions that does provide for the year, excuse me, for the term. Uh, so if it doesn't delay too much, I do think that we need to potentially do a resolution, amending essentially what you're requesting, just so that it's documented that that's the intent, if that's the direction that you wish to go.
But Mr. Kubis, you can proceed and move forward with this project while we amend this resolution.
It would not affect the project, correct?
So I, I, I would, uh, I would look to the commission to, for a, a motion to amend the resolution and direction, uh, I guess a motion for Mr. Kubis to proceed with the project.
Do we, do we need the actual resolution first?
Correct. Proceedurally, I think if, if you're in agreement with that, that's the direction, then I would bring back a resolution at the next meeting with the correct term and whatnot in that particular.
We'll proceed that way, and then I guess, we've already passed the, the resolution to proceed with the project, so I don't think we need to do anything else, but I guess you have clear direction now, Mr. Kubis.
I do thank you, President Decker and Commissioners.
You have a couple other items?
I think so. Can't remember. Um, one more, one more item was in our report we talked about, um, and then they brought it back at this meeting, and it was for an RFP for various projects around the city. Again, I will try and bring up a PDF, sorry, this takes me a little while on my end. Unless you have it up there already, I'm not sure.
Well, we, we have a printout, Mr. Kubis. So I don't know if you need to necessarily pull it up, other than to project it for the, uh, for those on the viewing audience, so.
So here are a series of maps of projects that, um, we would like to undertake, in some cases we, we, we began designing of them. And I will try and scroll through them. I believe they're in the order of, of the list that you might add in your packet. the first project on the list is, is Fourth Avenue East, and it's, it's really in the same neighborhood we've just been talking about. Um, the difference is this, this project is on our federal aid system in Dickinson, so we can, uh, essentially be reimbursed by the, by the federal aid we get, 80% of the cost of Fourth Avenue East. And, and Mr. Zeroff can attest, this, this road has given us, um, quite the fits over the last, especially a couple of years. Um, so we would like to put that project out, out to an RFP to have a consultant there working on that, and it would be a, a DOT project that involves federal aid.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on the Fourth Avenue East project?
That runs right by Rough Rider Electric, is that where we're at? There's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. Here. If you want me to just keep, you want to, I'm ready anytime.
Okay, yes, proceed.
The next project is State Avenue Street Improvement. And this is a project that would run from the Large Street by Frank East all the way north of Interstate to 15th Street. We had recently reconstructed from that point the door, um, but State Avenue is, is kind of getting in rough shape. It would require, uh, potentially some storm sewer improvements, and we've had some localized intersection flooding there. And, and my hope would be is that on a street like this, we would install our new standard, um, black streetlights along this, back to the corridor as well. Again, this would be a federal aid assisted DOT project, um, at, at the same 80-point match, where the city would have a 20% cost share in a project like this.
Any questions on this project for Mr. Kubis? You can proceed, Mr. Kubis.
The next project is Sim Street, again, from the Large to Museum Drive. Um, I think everyone saw the, the, the shape of the, the road surfacing on Sim Street. This street was, was really difficult on Sim Street, but again, um, and there are underground issues on Sim Street, not necessarily the entire length of this project, but there's some, again, storm sewer deficiencies, sanitary sewer deficiencies, that we would, um, like to be able to combine into one project. The busy street, we've needed to tear up a street like this multiple years, where we can get in and do construction, um, we'd be a big project, but who is in one construction scene, and so, um, that would be generally the scope of the Sim Street construction.
And this is not open to any federal aid?
The, the street itself could be, um, it, it complicates the matters a bit because, um, if, if we add in water and sewer improvements, those, those costs are not federally accepted or, the Fed won't participate in those costs, but it can be done, where one project would include utilities and streets, but the, the 80-20 match would only be on the street portion of it.
And, and, uh, Mr. Kubis, we do have the, the sanitary and storm in our capital projected projects, I believe.
That's correct.
And then that, that street probably would take some, some major engineering because just the, the size anymore, how the width and the boulevards probably ought all have to be looked at on that, so, but.
That's, that's correct for the Decker. A lot of these, a lot of these, um, projects, the ultimate work that needs to be done on them is, is somewhat undefined at this point, and that's why, you know, we want to get, um, consultants up there looking at it and making sure that we're not missing something when it comes to an improvement. Like I said, the last thing we want to do is, is tear open any street, but especially a busy street like Sims for, for two years, when we really, when we needed to be in there at one time.
Any other questions on Sims for Mr. Kubis? Next item, Mr. Kubis?
Okay, the next project would be Westgate Avenue, and familiar as everyone with the area, this is, it's a city street that essentially, um, accesses Dickinson Reading Mix and, and a couple other businesses. You can see it's Westgate Avenue, and then there's a frontage road along the Large Street West. So there, there's just a, a few businesses that access this. Um, it was a project that was, was programmed and planned, and, uh, I guess during the last downturn, you know, in 2015, uh, it, it fell off the radar, but still a fairly straightforward project that would, um, essentially just contain street improvements on this project.
Mr. Kubis?
Yes?
This, this, the primary user of this is just one business. Am I wrong in that?
For, for Westgate Avenue, and then it extends past that frontage road, uh, that would be a safe assumption. There, there might be multiple entities back there, but the, the business that everyone would recognize is Dickinson Reading Mix using that facility.
I guess, I guess my question is, you know, why, why do we own this and why isn't this not just private drive, if one entity is the only one accessing it?
Um, I guess my answer, President Decker, would be that that was planted back in, I want to say it was the late 70s or early 80s, so, um, there might be some options to do something different with, with the public railway, but as it's planted today, it is a public street.
Mr. Kubis, is, is there sewer and water in that Westgate Avenue then, or?
There is water. Uh, I'm, I'm not positive on the sewer improvements that would be there.
I mean, I, I could see we need to complete the intersection or the, the approach probably in that frontage road, but I, I think I'm with President Decker on, Dickinson Reading Mix is the only one that's going to use that. Maybe we just see if they want to take it. We just abandon it. I mean, that gets us out of the maintenance of it in the future too, because it does, it's, it's a street to nowhere, basically.
It acts as?
It would, it would, it would then, then the railroad tracks have the furthest, and it doesn't go that far right now.
Well, and it's never going to cross the railroad tracks, so.
Just the?
Yeah. So, I think that's what we need to take a look at on that one, is, is why we even own that and have a discussion. You know, I'm, I'm with, you know, Commissioner Frederick on maybe they, the approach there and that frontage road connector, but the actual, uh, road in, there's only one, one entity using that on a daily basis.
All right, I have that noted. Are you ready to move to the next, next project?
Yes, proceed.
Okay, so the next project is, is, uh, uh, well, it could be water and sewer. We presented this to the State Water Commission, um, as a, as a water-only project, but, um, currently up there, there's no sewer or water right now, and we, we have obtained a grant from the State Water Commission for funding of the water for this project. Um, we had, we had, I guess, I would call it, given a stop presentation to many of these neighbors, uh, in this neighborhood about the idea of a, a water and sewer improvement district, um, that was not widely accepted, and this is probably five or six years ago. Um, in the meantime, um, when Chief Seabuck was to fill on staff with the city, there was, um, quite, uh, an explosion up in one of these buildings, which I think drew a little more attention to the need for, um, having adequate hidden water in the area. So, and that's why we have it on the list here, to bring this up to, um, closer to the city standards as far as the water and sewer goes. Are there any questions on, on what we call the North Annex Station area?
I get, for me, this, this, this one here, going to take a lot of discussion. I, I can see the water, but, um, when it comes to any kind of street improvement, a sewer improvement, most, most if not all up there are sitting on septic tanks. Um, and we've been collecting property tax, city annex property tax for the last 10 years or more, and we have not offered them any, any improvements for, for any of that besides fire protection and waste protection. So I guess I'm, I have mixed feelings on any kind of street or sewer, but I, I do think the water, if we can use that grant and provide them with water service, I think we should do that.
President Decker and Mr. Kubis, that was one, we've had a lot of discussions on those roads about, uh, maybe looking at rural sections because of, uh, the cost and, and the way they are, so I don't know if that's a discussion too. The rural section would be, you know, not the curb gutter, and, and it would be a lot less expensive. We would just basically do an overlay on it, so I, I know there's been a lot of discussion on that.
I think we can get together and talk about that too. Come to a, to some conclusion to proceed on that, so, okay. Any other?
I, I appreciate these comments because, you know, when you add the water, sewers, street improvements, um, the project got very large, and I think that's what, what really, um, you know, put this to the back burner. But water is just, you know, it's just an essential term that we need to provide, and I believe you're correct, Mayor Decker, that a vote is not all of the property owners are on some sort of a private systemic system up here.
If there are no further questions, you can move on, Mr. Kubis.
President Decker, just to jump in here real quick before we move off of, um, engineering. Uh, when I had mentioned before that I wasn't aware of the, um, restriction for changing the term for assessments, I was reviewing the North Dakota Century Code. There's nothing in the Century Code, however, there is a very specific requirement in the city's code with regard to payment of impact fees. Uh, the city's code is very specific that a residential improvement project, project, the fee shall be assessed against the property owner for a period not to exceed 10 years with interest, and then it's also very specific that a commercial industrial improvement project, uh, the fee cannot be assessed, or the fee shall be assessed against the property for a period not to exceed five years. So that's what the code says currently, uh, so there may have to be some modifications to this and some amendments if the city wants to do something more lenient than what this provides, but that is what it currently reads in the city's code.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Okay, Mr. Kubis, you can proceed.
So, the, the next project on this list is, uh, a project on Fifth Street, Twenty-Sixth Avenue East and Fourth Street. Um, not in the most prominent area of town, but from what we have out there, we do have water and sewer, um, but an unpaid road and some really uncontrolled drainage that, that runs through this area. Um, just to give people a point of reference, if you know where, uh, I guess Moose Neck Equipment is now, is, is just north on Twenty-Fifth Avenue East and the East Business Loop. So, if you go south on Twenty-Fifth Avenue East from the East Business Loop, you get to this little U shape, um, looped roadway that has obviously several businesses on it right now today, um, with, with some of them having, you know, any of them having, um, paved parking lots and, and a gravel street coming to them. So, the intent with this one would be to, uh, to really just pave the, pave the roadway better out there. And I think we missed the ground, I might come up with again, maybe with a rural section because there's, there's ditches up there right now. If, if anyone has any questions-
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this? Okay, go ahead and move on.
The next project, um, similar in nature to the last one, uh, was the project that, uh, drew some attention earlier in the spring when we had a lot of freezing a thigh and some runoff. It was the frontage road, um, south of Twenty-First Street. And, and there's a small portion of what essentially is the connection to Fourth Avenue East. And right now, that section remained unpaved or again, you know, is, I'll put the inconsistency of past applications of, of city policies. So, this project would be, would be short in nature, would, would pave the gravel street, provide proper drainage, so we're not dumping water onto these businesses. Everything kind of flows north to south in this area. So, that would be a pretty straightforward project to clean up an area that right now is makes quite a bit of mud in, in the spring later.
Mr. Kubis, on that Fourth Avenue East, would we consider connecting that?
Connecting it to the south?
Yeah, can, no, connecting it to the, yeah, taking this, this frontage road and connecting it to Fourth Avenue East, because I think that's our, that's our right of way through that, in between those two buildings.
Correct.
It is. We, we, if we hadn't shown that again, that, that might be an option. I don't know if you can see my cursor when I'm, I'm living here, but-
No.
Fourth Avenue East, Fourth Avenue East and you go north of Twenty-First Street, um, it has been right on the shirt leg of that L if you continue that north.
Okay.
Fourth Avenue East and you go proud, the John's over a block and like you said, Mayor Decker, it goes between those two buildings. So, it, it certainly could, these are, these are, you know, real generalities of projects right now. Um, but there, there is very poor connection between Fourth Avenue to the north and Fourth Avenue to the south. So, it's definitely something we would investigate and, and certainly find the need on that connect.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's not a need, that'd be one we could just vacate, right? Eventually? Get rid of it?
Eventually a vacation could, could be a solution here.
Okay, Mr. Kubis, you can proceed.
The next project, we have the Twenty-First Avenue East. Again, this is off of the East Business Loop. Um, for a frame of reference, um, to a business, um, if you go at the door, it, it is just the, the wet of the green line here. This, this street has no water, sewer, or any paved street there. There's more or less a trail there. Um, at, at a funny time, there was some interest by private developers, um, who had put together a project that, that did come to fruition, but the project involved the water, sewer, and streets. And, and, and all three would make a nice tie, that water would tie in between, the water and sewer would tie in between, um, East, what did I say, East Valar and the Business Loop. And this is all planted property, city-owned right of way, um, with, as you can see, three or four developed properties, the rest of the industry things, um, open lots that they develop. This is a, a general commercial loaned neighborhood that again has a, what I would say, a slightly light industrial feel to it, but, um, it's all general commercial.
This one could be tricky. That's pretty wet there, right?
Um, along the east is, is, is the north end and it's pretty wet, yes.
Yeah.
It'd be like doing Fortieth Street, I think, when you're there.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Kubis, proceed.
On the first. The next project is, is quite a bit different in nature, um, so this is, uh, what we call the, the, the WTA spillway, um, right off of East Broadway. There used to be a, a old wooden bridge, if anyone remembers, just upstream of that. Um, the, the State Water Commission has recently brought it to my attention that they have a program out there, um, to improve lowhead dam. But this is one of those dams where in higher flows, the water really spills over that, creating a sort of an undercurrent on the downstream side, um, which is a dangerous situation, of course, if anyone's swimming or kayaking. Um, so what we would hope to see, what I would hope to see here is not only improve this structure from a structural standpoint, because it is, is about seven years old right now, um, but we can also, I hope, implement some beautification and turn this into an area that, um, would have more of a park-like feel to it than just a concrete spillway. And, uh, just again, it's all city-owned property and it's adjacent to quite a few acres of Hart River property. And, um, there is some private property to the, to the southeast of this, but the project itself would be on city-owned property.
Yeah, I, I've saw some mockups of, that you've provided, and I think that it would be great to do that. My, my only concern is we all know how much the Heart River actually flows and if we have some kind of falls there, can we as a city, I know we put gray water or our-
Reuse water.
Our, our, our water into the Heart River. Um, I don't know how much we do, um, on a daily basis, but if we somehow could move some of that water so it's at the, almost the, the head where the, the head of the river there, the man's dam as we all know it by the golf course, or somewhere around there, to at least create a flow with some of that water so that the Heart River would actually flow, so that these falls would actually fall rather than just having a low river? Is that a possibility, Mr. Kubis, Mr. Zera?
I, I guess I, on the, on the wastewater side, our discharge point, you know, is-
Is, yes.
Is, is set and it is via water reclamation facility. So, uh, with EPA, you have a designated, um, discharge point and with that discharge point, you have to approve volumes and, and do it a lot of different calculations. So, it would require a different discharge point, um, uh, and then also getting the water to your upstream. We do have, you know, the reuse pipeline that goes, um, south of there.
Right on the south, yep.
Um, but, uh, I, I think that would be the biggest thing is approval, uh, from EPA and the states to, to be able to discharge at that level for, at a different location. Uh, right now, because the use is low at the, um, uh, refinery and we are not selling any other dish, additional reuse water, you know, we have probably close to two million gallons a day that are, are discharged into the, into the Heart River.
Seeing that right there, if you had that discharge point upriver, like I said, towards, you know, further to the west, you would actually create a flow on that and it would make a nice fall for kayakers or just people in general. So, I think that's something we should really look at because, I mean, if there's water, you know, if there's dollars there to modify this, possibly there, you know, we go ahead and, and do this right, right away.
There, there's certainly some people who will look at, Mayor Decker, I think it's, uh, it's a worthy project. We've, we've been put on notice that it is a, I believe they call it a moderate hazard dam, so some work will need to be taken place on it at some point in the future. If we can, if we can make it something a little more attractive, I think that would be great.
Well, I, I know one young man lost his life there in the spring one time, many years ago. And, uh, so it is, it is known that things can happen there in the, with the heavy runoff in the spring. Okay, Mr. Kubis, you can proceed.
So, here's a little, uh, some of the things I'll add, but this is, um, the Crooked Crane Trail Phase Two. Um, again, a project we've talked about for a while now. Um, we've really, um, tried to push this with the, the railroad and I think all of each five commissioners are aware of, um, dealing with the railroad. They've asked us to make some improvements to other crossings unrelated to the area shown in red. Um, and that's been, um, I would say, uh, a much larger challenge than designing and building the trail temporarily. Um, so, but then that's, that's, uh, that's the situation we're in is that we, we, we're forced to build this trail, if we want to build the trail, in BNSF right of way. Um, we, we've exhausted our other options with private landowners. BNS has said that they would consider it. Uh, we're trying to really extract a hard price above that will cost to occupy the right of way. I think we, we give them assurances that we would make improvements to the crossings that they would like and those crossings would be, were, were down in the east and, and livestock lane. Um, but right now, it's, it's, it feels like they're, they're really asking for the city to put forth more effort than, than, than we're willing to do to, to get this thing up in that center. So, I believe it'd be a good project, RFP, um, to get, um, the consultant work to really push those improvements and, and get the project up dead center. It's another project for the trail itself, so that we have, um, a sizable grant, one point two million dollars to build this connection. And, um, when I spoke with the Outdoor Heritage Fund Committee, um, it's been quite a while ago, I, I really got the sense they believe that this would be the highest viewed project with Outdoor Heritage Fund money because it's connecting a, a city the size of Dickinson to a water feature like Patterson like that really no other city can claim in North Dakota. So, I think just, just a great project if we can work through the BNSF portion of it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kubis on the Crooked Crane?
Here's one more, one more blow up of the project, how it was originally laid out. This, this alignment isn't necessarily set in stone, but you can see we have Broadway right of way, which is actually BNSF right of way to the east to the city, um, private land to the south, um, the Dickinson guy is an obstacle that we'd like to use as a feature more than an obstacle. And then the golf course, um, and a private development that, that we really have to avoid at this point. I'm, I'll keep moving ahead here. The, the next project is, uh, what we're calling, it's, it's in Fifteenth Street West, north of the interstate. Um, I believe starting in zoning and, and seeing when this is, how this area could look, and this would make, um, that connection up to the Westridge subdivision from the point north of interstate where you wouldn't have to get back onto the interstate. Right now, it's, it's a little bit, to me, it doesn't act as Western stride if you're north of the interstate. You have to go with the Twenty-First Street north. Um, one thing I would add about this project, it's very important to phase it. We have, we have the capability to serve this area with water and sewer. Um, and there is no water and sewer in that, in that corridor right now, but the, the water tank is very nearby. You can see it in the dead center in the middle of the, of the, of the map. But we do have water and sewer, um, this particular piece of property even owned by, mostly by the school district and there's one private, uh, landowner and then North Dakota State University owns, essentially they own the, the west half of the project. Um, this is kind of a full alignment. I think it would make some sense to, to phase a project like this to get access to property that, uh, the Dickinson public school system might be interested in developing sooner than later.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this Fifteenth Street, uh, improvement?
No, that'd be a good project to get off the ground, I think.
I do too. Okay, Mr. Kubis, you can proceed.
So, the, the next project is a project that we had, um, budgeted for in twenty twenty. Um, as we've been adding lights in our downtown area, um, it's been, I would say it's been a little bit problematic trying to add a light here and a light there because all of our lights downtown right now are on by MDU. And when we put ours three lights up, they turn over all of that control, all of the wiring and all of the power sources, the feed points we call them, they turn that over to the city. And so we really need to take a comprehensive look at how we're going to feed the interior downtown where we want our decorative lighting and, um, this probably would really be a system layout more so than anything. So, we can feed projects like American Bank Center, who's willing to put up lights around their project, but they don't necessarily have the, the means or the know-how to know where the power should be coming from. That, that really needs to be controlled by the city. And I've talked with MDU, they would be happy to work with, with, with us on, on determining, you know, where power would best be fed from on a project like this.
Okay, any question? Yeah, any questions for Mr. Kubis on this electrical system lighting layout? I think, I think that would be a, a great idea to, to, to get this project moving forward and, and have MDU assist, uh, any other entities that are looking to do improvements, so.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Kubis?
I guess that they could actually put a project that's, that's the one that, um, I, I would add that, um, that this RFP, we would, we would prefer to advertise it to get, you know, the greatest number of, of qualified consultants looking at these projects. They obviously vary wildly and, and the type of work that would be done. Um, we, we would have that RFP available to be, be either modified at the wishes of the commission or spent out very quickly, um, so we could have a proposal come in for our review. And, and none of these proposals, again, I've mentioned it in my memo, um, would commit the city to hiring a consultant or building any of these projects. It would really just make a selection, um, but we would have, uh, consultants on board and if, 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 say, budget was a concern, we could wait until, you know, budget numbers cleared up. There isn't a definitive year necessarily that we have to, to build any of these projects in. Um, but it, but it kind of gets us once closer to really hitting ground running on these projects.
Well, and I think, I think too, Mr. Kubis, there's, um, there's probably going to be some federal dollars coming down the pipeline because of the, looking for shovel-ready projects. And I think if we have, um, shovel-ready projects, we can step to the front of the line, so.
Absolutely. That's, you know, we haven't heard anything definitive on that, but the DOT has been, um, inquiring with all, all the cities of all what kind of projects they could be going sooner than later. The other project, uh, excuse me, Commissioner, the other project that I didn't have listed on this map because there isn't a map for it yet, would be a project similar in nature to the one we discussed earlier, which is our annual melan overlay project. Um, we, we tentatively budgeted some money, um, to the last budget session, um, to put, again, roughly that five million dollars towards our, our annual street melan overlay project. Um, we don't know where that is yet, but we've done the management plan and we've identified a few neighborhoods that are, are probably neck in line for, for that melan overlay. Um, this year's project with the special assessment would be a good, you know, it will be of the training ground and see how that could proceed this year. And so this would be for a twenty twenty-one melan overlay. Location to be decided.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? All right, thank you, Mr. Kubis.
Thank you.
I will proceed into Public Works, and Mr. Zurov, you have a granular and liquid spreader bid.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. I wonder if we could, if I could change with engineering and be ahead of engineering from now on? Go on.
You know, you know, Craig gets cut off quite a bit, the 5 o'clock timeline, so I'll take some chances by moving up.
I appreciate all his projects, and, uh, I, I think it's important to get, uh, those going. So the, the, the first item I have on me, my agenda this evening, is, uh, the bids for the granular and liquid spreaders. Uh, these are a set of, uh, two granular and two liquid spreaders. They will be, uh, for our new, uh, uh, single axle and tandem axle dump trucks uh, that were purchased, uh, uh, in 2019 and are still, uh, actually be, being built. Um, so the street division put this bid out. The low bid, uh, was, um, uh, from Burt's Truck Equipment for $80,885. Uh, we did, uh, uh, look at, uh, the exceptions on those bids with, uh, Burt's Truck and Equipment and the Swenson Granular Spreaders. There were seven, uh, exceptions in the bid. Uh, we then looked at the second lowest bid of $83,686 from Northern Truck Equipment. It had two exceptions. Uh, we reviewed, um, all the bids. Uh, we, uh, came to the conclusion that the units from Northern Truck Equipment, uh, were more acceptable in the minimum price, price difference, uh, along with, uh, two exceptions versus seven, seven exceptions, that, uh, we would want to, uh, recommend to the commission, uh, to purchase these units from, uh, Northern Truck Equipment for $83,686. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to, uh, discuss them with you. Also, uh, our street chief included, uh, many documents on, um, the specifications and how we looked at each of them, uh, what they were, uh, our concerns were, the bid documents, um, and, uh, so the answer, so I'd have to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Zurov on these bids?
Mr. Zurov, what, do you know what we had budgeted for this?
Um, yes, it was, I think, over $100,000, if I remember correctly.
So we're under, we're under budget?
Yes, it, it is within budget and under budget.
And it looks like they can get it here in a timely manner, most of them?
Uh, yes, uh, it should be before, uh, uh, later summer. Uh, we're still waiting for some of the hydraulics on the 2019 trucks, uh, but there will be a, a build date for these also. But we're, we're, um, pretty confident we can get the, the standard spreader units and the liquid systems before winter comes next fall.
Any other questions for Mr. Zurov on this spreader bid? Any no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the bid.
Mr. President, moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Walla. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Zurov, you have a First Avenue West water main replacement task order.
Yes, this professional services agreement, uh, is with Apex. It's for the, uh, it's a replacement project for the existing six-inch cast iron, uh, water main, um, on First Avenue West from Second Street to Third Street. Um, the task order includes a project management preliminary and final design with limited construction observation. This is a replacement project, um, and, um, it, it started when there was discussion about redoing this, this street, um, First Avenue West. Uh, but, uh, as, as we looked at the, the project more, um, in thi- this year's budget 2020, uh, we did start adding, uh, a replacement budget of 300,000 in our, in our, in our fund, if you remember, because we wanted to start replacing, especially some of the downtown old water mains, block by block, if we could. So thi- this would be one of the first, I, I guess, budgeted, uh, water main replacement projects as, as, as planned. Um, so we have the 300,000 in budget, and the idea was to fix a block, um, of either water, water and, and sewer. I have it in the sewer fund also. Uh, but this, uh, this fits it perfectly, and whether or not, um, uh, American does this street or we do this street, I think it's a great project. It's, it's got limited services, it's an old six-inch cast main, um, it had a lot of abandoned service lines. So, um, I think this is, uh, will, will be a first one in our replacement, uh, projects that hopefully as we move forward. Um, and, and it's minimal, uh, the task order is minimal, because, um, uh, it's, it's minimal design for the replacement, minimal construction oversight. So, um, I look forward to, we'll be forward with it with, uh, commission's approval.
Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this placement project?
Any no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the replacement project.
Moved to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And the last item, we have the restart of the recycling fee, uh, assessed, uh, amount in collections.
Thank you, President Decker and Commission. Um, a- as the public knows and the commission knows, uh, recycling was, um, suspended due to COVID. Um, you know, at that time, there were a lot of unanswered questions, what to do, uh, for protection of staff, uh, how do we need to, um, prioritize staff, what staff is going to be, uh, the hours, the rotations. But, so at that point, uh, I, I think it was the best decision to, to temporarily suspend recycling, um, not knowing, uh, the extent of, of how the, the virus would, would move on, and, and limiting staff. Um, we feel it's a good time to, to reinstate recycling. Uh, we've, uh, looked at, uh, kind of how we do our process. Uh, before we did, um, do some actual, um, removal of, of some contaminated items, I think we're going to, uh, it, before it ended, it was getting limited, so we're going to end that. So everything will be by a loader, uh, we're not going to be out there sorting through the recycling. So I think that's, uh, that's a positive. Um, the, uh, MRF in Minnesota is looking forward to our, our material again. Um, and so, uh, May 11th, uh, next Monday, we're going to reinstate recycling. Um, and, uh, with that, uh, we will be reinstating, uh, the, the monthly fee, uh, $4.25 for recycling. And I did, uh, have, have, uh, a couple of slides here. One is just the recycling update, uh, saying that we'll be starting again May 8th, 11th and, and May 18th. And you remember that not ev- everybody gets it the same week. So remember, there's the A and B part of recycling map. So, for example, I'll go on the north side, because I'm on the north side, Fridays. Uh, not everybody, uh, you know, uh, gets the recycling, uh, picked up on Friday at the same time. So as south of, of 21st, uh, are the A, uh, portion, and north of 21st would be the B portion. So, um, the A portion, ma- starting May 11th, uh, so if I was on the south side of 21st, I would be, uh, getting my recycling picked up that week. If you were on the north side, you would be getting your recycling picked up, sorry, uh, on the week of the 18th. Um, we're looking forward to getting it going again. Uh, we hope that the contamination is limited like it was before. It was, uh, we had, uh, great, um, great, uh, results of what was put in, in the recycling bins. It was, been very clean, and we hope that continues. Um, I did, uh, put a, a packet that we sent out when we started recycling, uh, with the commissioners. Um, and, um, also, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to, uh, call the, the Baylor Building.
Or use the city app.
Or use the city app, and that's another thing I want to bring up. Please call, and you can download, uh, download the Dickinson Work, Works app. Um, and also, uh, effective yesterday, we have summer hours that are Baylor. So we extended our summer hours, so Monday through Friday at 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturday 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and Sunday noon to 4:00. Uh, the lines have been long, and so, uh, we opened it all up, summer hours and recycling. Uh, and, uh, and there is a newsletter, I think, being sent out, the May special edition, also, that reminds, um, people of, of that, so.
Get the word out.
Get the word out.
So this is Resolution 23 dash 2020. This will be reinstating the, uh, recycling program and the fee associated with it. Any questions for Mr. Zurov? Comments? I know there's a lot of people that really want their recycling back.
My bins full, and then some.
So, hearing that, I'd look for a motion on Resolution 23 dash 2020.
Moved to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further discussion or questions on 23 dash 2020? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Uh, we have nothing from planning, nothing from building code and enforcement. We have, uh, proceeded through, uh, public hearing and comments, and we'll move on to commission. Commissioners, are there any items that were not on the agenda this evening that you wish to bring up and discuss? I have one item. I, I know that we have, or some of us have been contacted repeatedly about the theater. And, um, I think it would be, um, an item that Mr. Daw and, and staff can look into and see where and how they are progressing over the next couple of weeks, and how we can possibly make some adjustments to that area.
Yes. Uh, we, we've heard comments, actually staff started some review, and we, we will plan to bring that to you at the next meeting.
I'm sure that we'll be in contact with the, um, the owner and the construction firm.
Yes, sir.
Finalize this, so. Okay, anything else, Commissioner? Now I look for a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.